I took call to order the August 23, 2017, regular meeting of the Board of Education. Mr. Anthony Anderson will at one point be participating via video conference from contemporary Hotel Bay Lake Towers, 4,600 Northwood Drive, Lake Buena Vista, Florida. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss legal matters? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried, we shall return at 6:00. The regular meeting of the Board of Education, August 23, 2017, is resuming. Just to remind everybody, we are actually all in attendance because Anthony Anderson is participating via video conference from Lake Buena Vista, Florida. For anybody in Lake Buena Vista, Florida, they can go wherever Anthony. Please rise for a fledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, whatever that was. I want to read the mission statement of the school district so everybody can memorize it by the end of the year. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment in partnership with families and our community. Our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda? Motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Questions and comments from interested citizens? We have a number of you. Remember, you have three minutes before you get the hook. James Scoofus.
Thank you very much, and good evening. Before I get to my comments, I just want to make one remark, and that's of thanks and expressing my gratitude for what you do. I know that oftentimes being an elected official can be thankless. I think among, if not the most thankless of those elected officials, are school board members, and nonetheless, the work that you do is among the most critical of that group. So I appreciate all that you do for the district, the students, and the taxpayers as well. You know, I want to comment on the boundary change issue. Obviously, you know, this is a pretty unique issue to our area. I imagine there aren't too many school boards or school board members who have to deal with boundary changes, at least under these circumstances, anywhere else in the state. And I know that you all have really studied this issue both long and hard, as you should have, but the matter of fact is, we're at decision time, whether it's tonight or in the immediate coming weeks. I believe that the prudent decision to make is to vote in support of boundary changes that are before you. Quite frankly, I don't see what the alternative is at this point. The proposed last before the county legislature is a precondition of them taking that up is, in fact, you changing the boundaries. So that's really what's at stake here. And the reality is, if the boundaries are not changed, at some point in the short or medium-term future, when the area under discussion is fully developed, you will have a voting block in this school district that does not exist now, that could jeopardize the integrity of this school district. It's not going to happen next year, it's not going to happen in two years, it may even happen in five years, but at some point relatively soon, if the boundaries are not changed, the district's integrity will be endangered. So I do believe that moving forward with these boundaries is critically important, and I hope that after you all studying this long and hard, you agree. I want to raise one point that I know is relevant, and I've spoken with the superintendent, with John, the president, as well as a number of individual school board members about this item. The negotiations that came about from United Monroe and Curious Joel opens the door for, really, me to have a conversation with Curious Joel leaders about the financing issue related to the boundary changes here, the proposed boundary changes, and how it affects the school district. There have been a number of times-told record articles. You all know even better than I do what precisely the financial impact is. My understanding is that the revenue loss is somewhere in the range of $800,000 to $900,000. When you factor in expenditures, that number obviously comes down fairly significantly. But the matter of fact is, you know, I certainly want to do everything that I can to ensure that negative financial impact is minimized, if not totally wiped out, or perhaps even, you know, we can turn it into a net positive for the school district. And I believe that we, I was able to secure an agreement with the support of, certainly the school district and many others, including United Monroe leaders, with Curious Joel, where they will support a packaged bill, one bill, that includes language that both accelerates the establishment of the town of Palm Tree, assuming it passes both the legislature, county legislature, and referendum in November. As it stands, under state law, Palm Tree would not come into existence until January 2020 unless special legislation is passed. And the negotiating stakeholders have, I think it's fair to say, a keen interest in seeing that date accelerated. So packaging that language into the same bill with language that would make, in effect, the Monroe Woodbury School District eligible for something called, and I know you all know what this is, incentive-building reorganization aid, which is typically used when school districts merge with one another. And the surviving school district needs to build additional classroom spaces, whatever it might be, to accommodate a new large influx of students from a different school district. I've sent the language to the superintendent for you all to review, just at 5:30 this evening, put it into a more formalized letter, if you will, which was requested by some or all of you, so I was happy to do that. And it very clearly amends education law to the eligibility for this incentive aid to include school districts that, A, lose property in boundary changes, and B, lose at least $500,000 in revenue from that boundary change, which certainly Monroe Woodbury under this proposal falls under. So I have a commitment from Curious Joel to support that package of bill, that those two items packaged together in a bill, and certainly United Monroe, the school district will be very supportive. And I'm going to certainly do everything I can to make sure that that bill moves forward and advances to the governor and gets signed. You know, we all know the politics surrounding Curious Joel-related items in Albany. That's why I felt that packaging these two items together and pairing the Monroe Woodbury financing piece with something that Curious Joel sincerely and seriously wants will compel, perhaps, some people to support this packaged bill that maybe they otherwise would not support if the KJ-relevant item was not in there. So, you know, we're finalizing the language as it relates to the Palm Tree acceleration piece. That piece is actually a little bit more complicated than we first anticipated because we have to factor in, you know, some time to have Palm Tree elect its officers before they can become, you know, come into creation. So we're finalizing that language. We're waiting for some feedback on the incentive-building reorganization aid language from SED. I've already run it through our council in the Assembly, and that's the language that you've seen is the product of that. If there are any technical changes from SED, certainly we'll update the language to reflect their technical guidance. But I did want to reassure all of you that this bill will be introduced. As it stands right now, as of the state, the language that you see is the language that is in the bill draft, and we're going to press that as hard as we can. And I certainly hope that, at the end of the day, that maybe helps make your decision a little bit easier as you move to vote on these boundary changes. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Jamie. Gay Grace Sass.
My name is Gay Grace Sass, and I have lived in the town of Monroe for nearly 14 years. I have children in the middle and high school who have attended Monroe Woodbury Schools since kindergarten. I'm speaking to you this evening to ask that this board take a decisive measure to protect our highly respected school district. Specifically, I ask that this board make a resolution to redraw the school district boundaries to exclude the 164 acres which have already been annexed into KJ, in addition to the 56 acres which are owned by Hasidic residents. This is the time; we cannot delay. The Legislature of Orange County is voting in September on whether or not to allow Monroe residents to decide their own fate by separating from KJ. While the overwhelming majority of residents support separation, there may be some legislators who, unbelievably, remain unconvinced of its benefits. We need the Orange County Legislature to know that the Monroe Woodbury School District fully supports the altering of its boundaries to preserve our well-respected school system. I am asking this highly esteemed board to let the Orange County Legislature know clearly and decisively that this district is fully motivated to separate. As it stands now, in the next election, KJ may gain control of the Monroe Town Board. If this happens, it means control over planning and zoning, and means that high-density housing would be possible and probable on the 13,000 acres of Monroe land. While I do not wish to disparage the residents of KJ, we all understand that we have vastly different goals for our respective communities. We are all familiar with the East Ramapo School District. Here in Monroe, we are staring down the barrel of another East Ramapo situation. People are asking how such a thing could ever happen. The answer is simple: they lost control of their school board. As a resident, taxpayer, and mom, I ask that you immediately demonstrate to the community and the county your commitment to this separation. Please resolve to redraw the school district boundaries without delay to preserve this great school district we all love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia McHugh.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Patricia McHugh, and I have lived in the town of Monroe for 24 years. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, and thank you for listening to what I have to say tonight regarding the board's decision on whether or not to redraw the school district's boundaries to exclude the 164 annexed acres plus the 56 acres negotiated in exchange for the separation from the Village of Curious Joel. There are many critical issues involved with this separation. I am here to speak about the one nearest and dearest to my heart, and that is the education of our future generations. I have been a public school teacher for 34 years, and I have dedicated my life to teaching. I am greatly concerned about the education of future generations of students who will be attending the Monroe Woodbury Schools, because if the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education is ever completely controlled by Hasidic men, as is the current East Ramapo School Board, you can expect our wonderful school system to become totally destroyed. What does that mean? That means generations of students will be denied the right to a decent education. It means they will be denied the ability to secure entrance to colleges and other schools of higher education. And it means they will be denied the ability to obtain good, well-paying jobs so they can support themselves and their families. We need to send a clear and powerful message to our county legislature that we want to save our schools from disaster by redrawing the boundaries of the 220 acres. If you do not send this message to the county legislature, you will be destroying the educational opportunities of the Monroe Woodbury students for all future generations. Our children, your children, your grandchildren, and your great-grandchildren deserve the right to the finest education we can provide them. A decision to redraw the school district boundaries on this separation is a decision to save our schools. Please send the legislature a powerful message by redrawing the school boundaries, and please save our schools for generations to come. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Manson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Manson. Monroe, New York has been my address for my entire life. The story of Monroe Woodbury School District is central to my family. My dad taught in the high school from before I was born, right up until the day he retired. My wife and I did our entire education in Monroe Woodbury. She's North Main, I'm Pine Tree. Somehow, we're making it work. For a short period of time after we first got married, we were actually outside the school district where our home was, was lived in another district. So when our son was in preschool, our oldest, he was having a lot of difficulties, and we soon, you know, realized that he was in the need of more services than, you know, a preschool would provide. He needed to get special education assistance. And the school district we were in fought us tooth and nail every step of the way, and it was a very bad situation. We knew we had to get him into a better experience for him, into a school district that would be more supportive. So by the time he was in kindergarten, we had moved into Monroe Woodbury. This, you know, young man who went through special education, you know, assistance for most of his education here in Monroe Woodbury is now going into his final year of grad school. He'll be graduating at the end of this year with dual degrees in education and special education, in part because he wants to give back to what he got here, and it gave him the kind of insight that he feels he can now bring to students in the future. Our middle son just graduated from Quinnipiac University with a BFA in film. I can trace that directly back to his experiences graduating this district with a Regents with Distinction of the Arts, which is almost unique in New York State that we offer that. Our little guy is, can be starting junior year this year. Monroe Woodbury is very special to us, but what's important is every family in this district, whether someone is employed here, whether they've had students here, whether they have friends, is impacted in that same special way. They're all special stories. The opportunities that are afforded here are incredible, and the lives of these students are touched by teachers, advisors, by their coaches, by their administrators. This is a special place. You all know that. You're here for that reason, the same reason that we are. Some of you have dedicated your entire careers to just that premise, right? We're asking that you make a tough decision. I'm a banker. I understand that in every decision, there's a financial component, but some things go behind dollars and cents. Some things get beyond price, and you have to reflect on value. And the value proposition that this district offers cannot be changed. It's too important. It's important to my son right now, it's important to us as graduates, and it's important to those who come in the future. We're asking you, please, please, make the tough decision, make the change, and the support you will get from this district will be unparalleled. You know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Huff, is that correct?
My name is Monica Hawke. I married into it. I take no responsibility.
My condolences.
Good evening, members of the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. As I said, my name is Monica Hawke, and my family and I have lived in the Village of Monroe for 23 years. When we moved to Orange County, our son was only four months old. We did not know it at the time, but a couple of years later, he was diagnosed with a severe disability. Through the Monroe Woodbury School District, we were able to access vital therapies and a specialized educational program for him. I shudder to think what would have happened if he had not received those services at that time. Our daughter was also educated in Monroe Woodbury School District. She participated in the various sports programs and extracurricular activities and went on to the college of her choice, armed with a solid educational foundation. We are the proud parents, we are proud of the adults that our children have become, and we are grateful for the role that the Monroe Woodbury School District played throughout their formative years. Even though our children are no longer school-aged, we still love where we live, and we would like to stay. We don't mind contributing our tax dollars to a fine school district, and because Monroe Woodbury has such excellent reputation, we know that the value of our home is maintained. But the fact is, we are currently faced with a crisis in our town and, by default, in our school district. The population of Curious Joel doubles in size every 12 years; that's a fact. If things do not change, the block vote will have complete control of the Monroe Town Board. That is a mathematical certainty. As such, they can appoint whomever they want to zoning and planning boards in Monroe. The district will follow suit. We have seen this movie before. If you want to see what the skeletal remains of a school district looks like, you have only to look at the East Ramapo School District. There, the Orthodox Jewish community had no interest in public education. Their families sent their children to private schools and yeshivas. When the school board was replaced with Orthodox-only members of the board, the dismantling of the East Ramapo School District began. Teachers were fired, sports and extracurricular activities were eliminated, and academic standards were nonexistent. Today, the East Ramapo School District is one of only three districts in New York State that has more private school students than public school students. The district we raised our children in will cease to exist as we know it unless the Board of Education takes swift action to let the Orange County Legislature know that the Board of Education is in agreement to redraw the school district boundaries. The time to act is now. For the sake of our children and our community, seize this opportunity, because we will never get it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. John Allegro.
John Allegro, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My wife and I moved here in 1998 for the schools. We looked at Washingtonville and a couple of the neighborhoods, and they have good school systems as well, but Monroe Woodbury was, you know, head and shoulders above the rest. And we had our daughter Grace in 1999. I had no idea that going through school as a parent, how much I would appreciate education, how much more I would appreciate it than I was a student. Mr. Kravitz in North Main, Ms. Rodriguez, you were there at the middle school, and I saw Mr. Poro, right, over there? And I saw Ms. Serrano coming over there. And all of you helped us so much to get our daughter Grace through school. She's graduating, graduated this year, excuse me, and off to college in September. You know, when I got involved in the volunteerism with United Monroe and the whole annexation bit in 2000, when was it?
14.
14. I thought, you know, maybe I'll be doing this for a year or whatever, and here we are today. It's almost 2018. And I got into it to see it through. I'm not the kind of person to say, "Well, my kid's out of school now, and I don't care. I'm gonna move, and whatever happens, happens." That's not the kind of legacy that I or any of my fellow volunteers would like to leave behind us. So I knew that I was getting involved not only for our own personal reasons, but to help others within the community who may not have time or may not have the courage to stand up. And I speak to so many families with younger children, four or five younger children, who want to stay here, just like I do. They want to bring their kids up the next 13, you know, 13 years to 20 years, depending on the age, through this fantastic school district. And that's why I'm asking you to please go along with a proposed boundary change to allow the Curious Joel School District to meet the proposed boundaries of whatever new town, the new town boundaries that possibly would be formed, for those people and for all of us. It's deeply personal to me, and it's deeply personal to so many of the other people whom I've spoken with, and I see it as a guaranteed, a guaranteed solution. You know, one thing is guaranteed if you do this. We have a rather long-term outlook that's positive, and that will preserve the school district. So I want to thank you all again, and have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. Myron Kemenetz, county legislator for Monroe, couldn't be here. She asked me to read the following statement on her behalf. The prime attraction drawing people to live in Monroe is the Monroe Woodbury School System. As I have campaigned this year and talked with more than 1,000 people on their front porches and in front of businesses like ShopRite and Bagel World or at the early morning park and rides, I have heard repeatedly from young parents that they have moved here because of the schools. A large number of houses are finding new owners in Monroe as older, empty nesters move out, selling their homes not to the mythical buyers from KJ but to young families, many of them immigrants from China, India, the Middle East, and the Caribbean Islands, and many of them are, many of them here while still holding high-paying jobs in New York City. For them, the house prices are affordable and the school taxes worthwhile because their primary concern is the quality of their children's education in a safe environment. We have come to the point in Monroe where we must decide the future of the town. It seems evident to me, as someone who has been elected to do the best for Monroe, that the schools must be protected first and foremost, and the clear way to do this is to divide the town along the lines of concern for the schools. The creation of the new town of Palm Tree concurrent with the moving the school district boundaries will split from our population a group of people who are not committed to the Monroe Woodbury Public Schools. It will enable those of us who are committed to our schools to continue to provide first-class public education, and most of all, it will ensure that we do not face a situation such as arose in East Ramapo. It is incumbent upon you as members of the school board to lead the way in keeping faith with the young families living in Monroe and to ensure that kids in kindergarten this year will graduate from a high school that will continue to be one of the best in New York. And to do that, you have to approve the moving of the boundaries of the school district. Thank you for your service and for protecting the education of our children. Myron Kemenetz, county legislator for Monroe. Laura Fernandez. Laura? Yes, Laura.
Good evening. My name is Laura Fernandez, and I moved to Monroe in August of 2012 from New Jersey. My sister, Claire Meese, has lived in Orange County for over 30 years and is fortunate to have had all three children graduate from Monroe Woodbury High School. This school system, which I knew so much about through my nieces and nephew, was one of the main reasons I moved to this area. Within a month of moving here, I was told to like a Facebook page called "Save the Monroe Movie Theater." The rest is history. I have been a United Monroe supporter and volunteer ever since. After five years of attending fundraisers, walking in marches, and helping to run endless political campaigns, there is finally a light at the end of the tunnel. We are so close to electing a town board that wants what the people of Monroe outside of KJ want. Separating from KJ is the next step. I would love nothing more than to see my eight-year-old daughter, who will be entering third grade at Pine Tree in September, graduate from Monroe Woodbury High School at the age of 18. Please help us gain our political freedom and protect our school district by redrawing the boundaries. the boundaries now. The agreement and legislative approval hinges on the district moving the boundaries. The 164 acres are already in KJ and are being developed as we speak. The land has to move. United Monroe negotiated 56 acres for our political freedom and the protection of our district. Please do your part and resolve to redraw the boundaries now. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Egan.
My name is Diane Egan, and I have been a resident of the town of Monroe for 35 years, so I think I've beaten everyone here except Jeff, who's a lifer, and Christine, sorry. And I've been a taxpayer in the Monroe Woodbury School District for 35 years as well. I have pretty much, gonna reiterate what a lot of other people who stood here before me have said, so I'm gonna join the chorus. I've proudly voted yes on all of those school budgets since 1983, when I moved here, for some very good reasons. As a parent, I had three children who went through the Monroe Woodbury School District from Sapphire through North Maine and graduated from the high school. I think I got my money's worth with those three children. As a homeowner, I continue to vote yes for those school budgets for my neighbors' children, but also selfishly for my own housing values. A school district, as we all know, is a big component of that. Lastly, I've been a high school teacher for 20 years, and as an educator, I think it's money well spent, within reason, of course. Okay? Now I'm asking that the school board do something important for those taxpayers of Monroe who have supported them year after year with their yes votes. I'm asking that the school board pass a resolution to realign, readjust these school district borders now. We don't really have any time to waste. These boundaries need to reflect the realities of a separation of the town of Palm Tree and the town of Monroe. The political and economic future of our town depends on this separation and also of our school district. Without this separation, the demographics show the town of Monroe will be dominated by the block vote. The same demographics, as so many other speakers have mentioned already, show that the Monroe Woodbury Schools will eventually be dominated by that single block vote, a block vote that has no use for public education, and, as are the experiences of our neighbors in East Ramapo, show can be actively hostile to public education. The economic impact is minimal and inconsequential. I was here in 1990, as some of you also were, at the creation of the KJ School District. The taxpayers of Monroe Woodbury School District supported that separation with higher taxes, not too heavily, but we, you know, we went along with that as the price of that separation. If you haven't read this book, it's written by the former New York State President of the School Boards Association about the creation of KJ and the school district, I would highly recommend it. There was a lot of machinations that went on back then, much less than now. It's now time for the members of the Monroe Woodbury School Board to step up and support the taxpayers of Monroe Woodbury School District, show them the same regard for their town as we have shown for the school district, and resolve to redraw the district lines. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, your worst half, Michael Egan. I'm sorry, did I say that out loud?
You'll pay for that. Thanks for the time to speak. I've met some of you, not all of you, but thanks to the board, thanks superintendent, thanks to the cabinet members I met once before. My name is Michael Egan, 35-year resident of Monroe. My wife told you the story of our children and all that. The only thing I'll add is I am one of the founders of United Monroe, along with a couple of other people here tonight, and also Preserve Hudson Valley, which is the entity that engage, is engaged in lawsuits over the annexations. You know, thank goodness none of us knew what we were getting into when we did in 2012, because I don't think we would have ever done it, to be honest with you. But now we're gonna see this thing through. So, you know, just to state the obvious, but it's often worth remembering, you know, Monroe has a problem no other town in our county has, I don't know a town anywhere that has it, and that is that we have two vastly different communities living in it. The Village of Curious Joel, it's 26,000 residents, aspire to urban-style living, you know, high-density housing, heavy use of resources, no use for public schools other than, you know, the special ed site, and a big priority on private schools. And everybody else that lives in Monroe aspires pretty much the opposite of that, has nothing to do with religion, has everything to do with quality of life aspirations. And so what? You know, I lived here all those years, it really wasn't a big issue until about 10 years ago, and what became apparent is that it was a death match for control of the town board. And the reason for that is that the town board controls many of the gating factors of those quality of life, you know, they control annexation approval, zoning, permits, hiring, tax monies, all that stuff is controlled by the town board. So, you know, each side wants its representation on there, wants the control, and, you know, it sets up dysfunction. The school boards, you people may think it's bad if you're here till night and night or something. I go to town board meetings, and the fighting goes on till 1:00 in the morning routinely, and nothing gets done. You know, now there's some good people on that board, and they've made a real shift in what happens, but it's a struggle. It's a struggle. It takes three times as long as it should. So, you know, this is the dysfunction we find ourselves mired in. And as we look forward, it's clear that it's a struggle that those outside of KJ cannot win. We proved that in 2013. We had a turnout outside of the Village of Curious Joel that doubled the normal turnout, and they all voted one way. It was a block vote against block vote. Guess what? We lost. And there was no going back, because KJ voters grow at 8% a year, everybody else grows at less than 1%. So it's a tidal wave washing over. And so the only answer is separation. There is no other answer. I've been around this a million times. There's no other answer. Separation is the only way to do it. And the only reason KJ is now willing to separate, because they could have done this, you know, years ago, the only reason is because frankly, we stymied them on their annexations, and they have a problem. The population's still been growing, they don't have any place to put the people, they have money issues and so forth, so they finally, for the first time ever, decided that, oh, we better compromise. And United Monroe stepped forward and said, "Great, let's do it. Not at the price you're looking for, a lesser price." We negotiated the deal, and that's where we are. And so when we then sat down, and I was the lead negotiator and writer of this agreement, along, you know, with a lot of support from a lot of other people, a lot of people being involved, but we put this group right here, right at the front of it, and we said, "The first government organization that we want to have approval of this is you." And you want to know why we did it? We did it because we wanted to take the school board issue off the table when the legislators went to vote and when the citizens went to vote, because we know how important that issue is for everybody, right? We wanted it off, we wanted it resolved, we wanted them to know that when this town's created, the borders will shift, the school district will be presented. But we also had another reason, because we figured if there was anybody in this town of Monroe who understood the need for political independence, it was you. It was you, because in 1990, this school district and KJ did exactly what we're asking you to do. Said, "You know what? For political independence, we need to separate, because I can see, we can see what's coming." And that's exactly the position we're in. And this community supported all of you, supported all of you. There was large tax increases, far more than anything that will come of this, you know, infinitesimally more than what will come of this. There were big tax increases as a result of that, but the community supported you and supported KJ and supported New York State law change. So it is, it is, it is the moment of truth. We asking you to do your part, to be the first group to step up publicly, a governmental group, and show real leadership and say, "This is what we need to do," and get it done. Thank you.
Mike, did you want to read something from somebody? Why don't you do it now when you're up here?
Okay.
Tom Ammons, we're allowing you to do that.
So Tom Ammons is CPA and president of a financial services company called Affinity Advantage, based in Middletown, and he is very committed to this, and he couldn't be here tonight, he's got a personal thing going on, so he asked if I could read his letter to you that he would have delivered himself. "Thank you for the opportunity to address the board." By the way, Tom does live in Monroe. "The residents of Monroe have read and clearly understand the Yiddish writing that is on the wall buildings and in the sky. Unless we wrest control of our town through the separation of our land areas, the rapid growth of their voting bloc will continue to decimate our way of life and the future values of our homes. The open issues that we must resolve regarding the environment and boundaries pale in comparison to the future loss of value of our homes. The goal for all of us is peaceful coexistence. We want to pursue our own dreams and raise our families in an environment that we have become accustomed to. While there will be an estimated loss of revenue of $880,000 or an additional school tax of $30 per household before expense reductions, we must stop and quantify the longer-term effects of a town and potentially a county run entirely by the leadership of KJ. This possibility is not unrealistic. We have a perfect precedent set for us. Simply look at the systematic dismantling of the East Ramapo School District in neighboring Rockland County. The question before us is truly uncomplicated. How do we protect and preserve the stellar reputation of the Monroe Woodbury School District? The answer is obvious. We must maintain the leadership of our town board. We can maintain and expand our leadership by voting yes for the upcoming referendum, which most of the residents are in favor of, or we can resign ourselves to the fact that the explosive growth of KJ is unstoppable and leave town as others have done. Of course, we choose to stay and protect the lifestyle and educational system we built. We have no choice but to adapt to the village of KJ's ever-growing population. By allowing the town of Palm Tree to be formed, we can more effectively manage our own cost structure and destiny. Our upcoming referendum outcome will seal our fate. We must weigh the long-term ramifications of not letting KJ pursue their unique agenda based upon their beliefs. We need to manage our own future by having the ability to do so. We will only have that ability if we allow KJ to form the town of Palm Tree and realign the school district boundaries. My dad would always tell me that I can either be part of the problem or part of the solution. I choose to be part of the solution, and I hope that the board chooses to be part of the solution too. Thank you, Tom Ammons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Conver.
Hello, I'm Emily Conver. I'm the chairwoman of United Monroe and resident of the Village of Monroe for 10 years. Before I start, and I have a small statement, it won't take long at all, I just want to echo some of the words of James Scoofus when he talked about how difficult it can be to serve, and I have the pleasure of knowing many of you, and I really, really sincerely appreciate everything that you do every day, and I know it can be very thankless. So thank you. Thank you, President Hubert, trustees, Superintendent Rodriguez, Assistant Superintendent Hassler, and the rest of the administration. I appreciate your time. If Monroe does not separate from Curious Joel this year, Monroe will have a KJ-controlled board forevermore. We, the citizens of Monroe outside of Curious Joel, will not have representative government ever again. What does that mean? That means the KJ-controlled board can annex all of the land they want from Monroe into KJ. It means they can change all zoning in Monroe to high density. That means all 13,000 acres of Monroe will be essentially Curious Joel. With 13,000 acres of Monroe completely controlled by KJ forever, you will see a mass exodus of Monroe Woodbury School families. You will see a major influx of high-density housing in families whose kids attend private schools. You'll see the end to the Monroe Woodbury School District. The separation will positively impact all taxpayers in the Monroe Woodbury District. The 164 acres KJ annexed, thanks to the previous KJ-controlled Monroe Town Board, now sits in Curious Joel. 164 acres now sit in KJ and are being developed with high-density housing today. Whether we separate or not, the Monroe Woodbury District will need to redraw those boundaries to give the acres to the KJ School District. So the only land we negotiated was 56 acres on the north side of Route 17 in Monroe. 56 acres instead of 13,000 acres controlled by Curious Joel if we do not separate. It's an excellent compromise, and please know, in this compromise, Curious Joel is withdrawing their legal appeal for the full 507 acres. So what I ask today is that you please resolve to redraw the school boundaries. The legislature is voting on September 7th on whether to allow Monroe to vote on separation or not. With the Board of Education having publicly resolved to redraw boundaries, it gives a green light to the legislators, who may have been on the fence, to vote yes and allow the people of Monroe and many of the Monroe Woodbury taxpayers a say in their future. Please resolve today to redraw the boundaries of our district. I ask you not only as the leader of a large volunteer organization, but as a mom of two dearly loved sons in this district. Thanks so much for your time, the opportunity to speak, and for your service to this great community.
Thank you.
That ends the period of questions, comments from interested citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 11, 2017 reorganization and regular meeting of the Board of Education?
Motion.
And the minutes of the special meeting of August 16, 2017?
Motion.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. We will now have a school district boundary alteration report with Elsie and Patrick Cahill, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Management, after which we will vote on a resolution, and after which we will have a short break, in case you people have any desire to leave this room at all tonight.
It's nice and warm in here.
Where's that?
We can stay online. Where's the...
Good.
This won't be as long.
I'd like to begin by just saying a thank you to everyone who got up and spoke so eloquently about the position that they're in. I know that there's a lot of emotion and passion, and I've been in the district for 17 years, and I know firsthand how difficult this all is. So I thank you for coming here, and thank you for sharing your thoughts, your concerns, imploring us to do what you think is best. From the beginning, I have always said that I will always recommend to the Board of Education what is in the best interest of our students and our taxpayers, and that has not changed. So I ask you to listen to our presentation, and afterwards, the board will be taking, making some decisions, but I ask you again, if you have any questions, you can certainly ask us afterwards, but thank you. I want to thank the Board of Education for the opportunity to present our Questar III Report this evening. Go to the next slide, please. I wanted to give everyone a historical perspective, but I think that everybody who spoke gave their own historical perspective. We all know that the Curious Joel Union Free School District was established in 1990. There were several challenges that were very quickly put forth, but by 1999, those challenges were resolved. The vast majority of our KJ students attend private yeshivas, and that is why the school district that they currently have only provides special-needs children. The last thing I wanted to say was that when the school district was created, Curious Joel Union Free School District was coterminous with the Village of Curious Joel. It's important to note that for 23 years, the Village of Curious Joel and the Curious Joel Union Free School District were coterminous. So then what's happened? Can you go to the next slide? I thank you, thank you for coming back. I thought you were gonna leave.
No, I wasn't gonna...
I got a little scared there. I said, "I started to..."
Working on the next agenda, he retired.
I looked to the right, and I see that he's gone. And by the way, he's the gentleman who all the mathematical numbers, so I was very scared. But anyway, I will move on. So how did we get here? In 2013, December of 2013, a group of landowners petitioned to annex 507 acres into, that were currently in the town of Monroe, to be annexed into the Village of Curious Joel. After that, in June of 2014, there was another petition for 164 acres. Again, the same thing, there were landowners in the town of Monroe who were seeking to be annexed into the Village of Curious Joel. That obviously became a concern for the school district, and we watched and read and had our attorneys and listened to everything that was going on. On September 7th, I was sitting in the audience when the town of Monroe voted. They voted yes... They voted yes for 164 acres and no to the 507. Soon after that, both decisions were challenged and they were brought to court. The school district at that time decided that they needed to create what's called a Boundary Line Alteration Committee, because we knew that no matter what the decisions were, they were going to have a profound impact on our school district. Additionally, they decided that we would hire Questar III because we needed to have an independent assessment done of what would happen if, in fact, they were able to annex 507 acres or 164 acres. Again, both items were still being fought in court. Recently, there has been a proposition for the Town of Palm Tree, and you've heard this before, because again, the speakers before me have eloquently said this. The 164 acres has already been incorporated into the KJ Village. And what the new Town of Palm Tree would have would have an additional 56 acres. So I'm going to turn to the next slide. There's a map there. If you look behind you, John, there's a map. And what you see, that's supposed to be...
Thank you.
That's a... Thank you. You're supposed to see green. Those are, that is, the 164 acres that's already been annexed into the Village of Curious Joel. They're referred to as the five fingers, and I see that Patrick is...
Trying to identify the five finger area here.
Correct. Thank you. The 56 acres that is now going to be part of the new Town of Palm Tree is the blue, except for the blue on the right, which is actually water. So to your left, and he'll show you that as well, those are the parcels of land that they're referring to. Thank you. So that is what's at question, and that's what's being discussed, and that's what has been discussed during the opportunity to give people to speak, which is this, it was called the Town of North Monroe, but it's actually called the Town of Palm Tree. That's the new name, the Town of Palm Tree. So what we're going to have is we're going to have Patrick give you the report from Questar III to help explain what we've been doing. We've been doing an analysis for almost three years, and it's been a moving target for us, because originally it was 507, then it was 164, and now it's 220. So the last couple of weeks, we've been refocused on the 220, and so we will provide all the information regarding the 220, the annexation of 220. So Patrick, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Okay. So the next slide, align, to align or not to align, we're talking about school district boundaries here. What the district did is we issued an RFP, Request for Proposal, to independently, as Elsie mentioned, and objectively, with an outside body or entity, measure and assess the financial impact of annexation. And as Elsie mentioned, we initially were dealing with two scenarios, the 164 acres and the 507 acres. So the scope of the question or the analysis changed, and we're now with the Town of Palm Tree looking at 220 acres. So we asked the consultants to consider lost tax revenue impact to state aid. Another big idea was expenses that are currently, that we experience in these areas due to students and the services we have to provide, and how those areas would look once they were fully built out. If, in other words, those areas moved into the Village of Curious Joel. At that time, it was the village. It wasn't necessarily a town. Yet the school district boundaries were not changed. So the area would build out, there would be high-density housing, as we've heard previously, the population would go up, and we're going to talk about that. The pupil population would go up, the services would go up. So how do you measure or weigh the loss in tax revenue versus the expenses that you would incur or not incur, depending on if you moved the district boundaries? So we engaged Questar III BOCs, State Aid and Financial Planning Unit. It's out of Columbia County BOCs, so it's a little north of here, but they're a unit that does a tremendous amount of work with school districts throughout New York State. They probably have 400 school district clients in New York State. And, you know, just based on the complexity of state aid and the expertise required, you know, they've become an invaluable resource, the school districts, who, you know, really navigate that labyrinth of state aid and some of the financial questions and issues associated with it. And I think, I just put a bullet up there, as the State Education Department, this is sort of a little editorial, as they've gotten smaller over the years and less able to provide guidance or assistance to districts, it enabled Questar III to sort of fill that void. And so really, when you call the State Ed Department, they really can't help you, they don't have the time, they're, you know, really focused on their mission, you know, and not necessarily helping districts in the way they used to. So we engaged Questar III BOCs. The idea was to measure both short-term, immediate impacts, which is what we've been talking about, and longer-term impacts, which are, you know, I'll qualify that, much more speculative, right? I mean, we had to make a lot of assumptions. We tried to utilize the county study, census data, you know, different sources, but we're not demographers, you know, I'm not a planner. The gentleman who helped us with this was a recent retiree from Questar III BOCs, expert in state aid, but we had to rely on other reports and other sources of information as well. We did not attempt to measure the annexation's impact on local property values or, you know, the real estate market. I know that's a concern, or maybe a concern, or the local economy, sort of outside the scope of this task and this report, and outside of our area of expertise. So I won't go through all this, very wordy kind of slide here, but I'll just hit the highlights. Assumptions and key data points. So the study, the big picture, as I mentioned, was to sort of measure the loss in tax revenue against costs we would no longer incur if we were to move our boundaries. So all the values are expressed in current dollars. We didn't try to discount future dollars or anything. I mentioned we used other sources. The current loss in tax revenue, approximately $880,000, was computed using the latest available data when we did the report, which was the 2017 taxable assessed values and last year's tax rates. So it's going to change over time. All these data points will change over time. You know, it's like a snapshot in time for the current impact. We forecasted changes to the annexation area, I mentioned that. Again, I'll hit the highlights. We forecasted high-density housing, which would lead to population growth and lead to, you know, growth in pupils. And the population growth that we forecasted was well in excess of the non-village portion, you know, the Town of Monroe or the surrounding communities. We projected approximately, I'll just sort of cut to the chase here, if the entire 220 acres was built out, that the population would grow to 13,409 people, or approximately 61 people per acre. And that was, we hung our hat largely on the county report. The other forecast, the other assumptions we made, increased student population leads to increasing requests for services. And so what we're talking about here is transportation. There's certain things that the local district is responsible for, required to provide to students, resident students who attend non-public school. So if they request and they're eligible for transportation, we have to provide that. There's certain related services for classified students that we're required to provide services to. There's various instructional materials, like textbooks and things, that we're required to provide. So we considered all those things, and, you know, we assumed that those expenses would increase without the boundary change. So based on our population projection of around 13,400, we projected that the student population would increase to around 6,800. It's actually 6,824 students within the annexation area, to be precise, when it's fully and completely built out, fully developed. Difficult to know when that would be. Five years, probably, maybe more. I understand that there's a need, right, for housing and a desire to build and develop these areas quickly. So when we talk about short-term, long-term, I'm thinking, you know, zero to four, five years short, and beyond five would be the long term. But these things would also sort of happen gradually over time. You know, gradually is a relative term, so... Let's see. The other assumption we made, the additional development would lead to increases in the tax base, you know, or more ratables, you know, that's a word they use sometimes. And again, we computed that, we considered that. We said, if this area builds out the way we think it will, if we don't move our boundaries, we're going to have higher expenses, but yet we're also going to have higher revenue because of that development. And we projected the development, the tax revenue from this development to be around $5.8 million. And the way we did that is we took an average value, taxable, school district taxable assessed value for Curious Joel, and we just multiplied that average by 220 acres. So we took what has happened or is happening in Curious Joel, and we applied it to the 220 acres, and multiplied the increase in taxable assessed value, which we estimate around $37 million, by the 1617 tax rate in Monroe, 133. Okay. So as part of our report, we developed a scorecard or a matrix. We're using the word scorecard, which was essentially a way to quantify, you know, the moving parts involved with this analysis. And I sort of likened it to a net present value computation, which is an investment term where you decide if you're going to make an investment, if the net present value is positive, you know, you make the investment. If it's not, you don't. And so what we're considering is, if we change the boundaries right now, what happens if in the future this builds out the way we think we do? We don't change the boundaries. How does that look? You know, what's the impact to the district? And let's see. The scorecard is sort of final bullet. Scores card assumes, excuse me, that two current trends that we've been noticing, difficult to quantify, but we've been noticing these would continue, and it incorporates that into the analysis. So increasing utilization of services by pupils. So these are the pupils that are attending non-public schools, are entitled to certain transportation, other things. We're noticing that that utilization is increasing, and substantial growth in student population. So this is the annexation matrix, which attempts to sort of quantify this, and we have two of these. We have the short-term and the long-term. And, you know, maybe based on time, I won't go through everything, but what we're attempting to do here on the left-hand side is show revenue. And we initially had this set up like an income statement, where we had revenue, and the right-hand side is expenses. We had one below the other. It was difficult to show on a slide. So on the left-hand side, we're showing revenue, and the right-hand side, we're showing savings or, I guess it's really savings, if Monroe Woodbury moves the district boundary, short-term. So this would be the immediate impact to the district. So I'll start over here. We see one of the immediate impacts is a loss in tax revenue of approximately $880,000. We would likely see, in the short-term, a bump in state aid, small, $60,000. No, I would say on a $171 million budget, not really that material. But a lot of state aid formulas are based on a ratio, a wealth ratio, and it takes into account property wealth and income wealth. So we would be slightly less wealthy if we lost this property, and therefore, those ratios would go up. We'd get a little bump in state aid. We'd get a little decrease in textbook aid, because that's based on pupils both in your district and attending non-publics, pupils that live in your district. Again, $6,000, not really material. We would get an increase in non-resident tuition revenue. Now, this is for our estimate of 20 students that are residing in, currently residing in the annexation area, 220 acres, attending Monroe Woodbury Schools. So presumably, in the short run, they would continue to attend Monroe Woodbury Schools, but on a tuition basis, they would be the financial responsibility of Curious Joel Union Free School District. So Curious Joel Union Free School District would pay us, we're estimating, approximately $240,000, $239,380, to continue to have those students in our district. So the bottom line here, on the revenue side, the revenue category, is a loss of approximately $386,000. Now, over on the right side, we're talking about savings from annexation. So we would experience some transportation savings. We're estimating that's about $67,000 here. We would save on tuition for students with disabilities. There are three students currently that live in the annexation area. Those students would be the financial responsibility of Curious Joel if we moved the boundary. So we would have savings of $167,000 here. There's also a smattering of services, related services, these savings of about $11,300 here. So the savings from annexation, if we move the boundary, annexation occurred, we move the boundary, would be approximately $242,000. So the net present value or the income, depending on how we want to state it, immediate, right, from annexation and moving the boundaries, would be a loss of approximately $343,000. So it's not as favorable in the short term, but not everything is about money, right? Because the lost revenue exceeds the expenses that we would be shedding. So why do it, right? That's the obvious question, begs the question. So we look at the longer term. In the long term, again, defined five years maybe and beyond, we have the same type of matrix. On the left-hand side, we're showing revenue, right-hand side, we're showing expenses. So on the left-hand side, here's that number. Based on a full build-out, we're estimating that we would get revenues equal to about $5.8 million additional revenue. That assumes a full build-out, very similar to what is in Curious Joel. We would have, and now this is, forgive me, this is if we do not move the boundaries. What does this look like in the future, right? So we would get an additional $5.8 million in revenue. We would get a slight decrease in state aid, again, because we're wealthier with the development of those 220 acres. I'm showing here the future transportation aid would go up quite a bit, $6.8 million, but that is directly tied to transportation expenses also going up. And we get a little bump in the textbook aid because there are additional pupils. Again, bottom line, the effect on revenue in the long term, if we did not move the boundaries, would be an increase of about $12.9 million. We go to the other side of the ledger, which is the future costs, like these would be costs we would incur if we don't move the boundaries, or we avoid if we do. So the transportation, our projection or forecast, around $11 million additional. The students with disabilities are attending a very specific out-of-district placement in 853 School. We're estimating about four students that would live in the 220 acres. This number, again, expense $89,000, it's net of private excess cost aid. The non-resident tuition for students with disabilities, about $3.3 million. And again, we're estimating there'd be about 63 students living on 220 acres on full build-out. The related services expense would be about $351,000. Cut to the bottom line, $14.8 million would be the additional expense in the long run if we did not move the boundaries of the district. So the net present value or the income of not changing the boundaries, what would happen is a loss of $1.9 million annually. That's our projection. So the conclusion, and I'm repeating myself a little bit, in the short run, district will experience a loss of approximately $343,000, due primarily to the loss of tax revenue associated with the 220 acres. In the longer run, and I would say, I have three to five years, I don't know, I would say it's probably more like five, of not moving the boundary leads to projected future expenses that exceed future revenue by $1.9 million. And the estimated tax impact, this was one of those questions, you know, that's been floating around out there, and we've worked on it a little bit. We estimate the impact on a typical home with a market value of about $275,000, in 1617, it would be about $21 annually right now if we moved the boundary. So in that initial scenario, we were saying the cost, you know, the net cost would be a negative, or we'd lose $343,000. For the average homeowner, the average taxpayer, that would be about $21 annually thereafter. The other conclusion or takeaway here is, with the boundary alteration and the movement of the school district boundary, we essentially maintain the course of action that the district established in 1989 with the separation of Curious Joel Union Free School District from Monroe Woodbury.
And the other piece would be that we would be continued, we would be coterminous with the new Town of Palm Tree. Right? If we move the boundaries, they would be coterminous. The school district, the... The school district, the school district and the village would be co-terminists, which is what we started in 1990.
The board has had a chance to speak with the lawyers in executive session about the legal ramifications of this. Does anyone on the board have a question at this point in the presentation?
You just told us about the impact on the 164, or 220, but nothing about the 507.
No.
220. The way it looked at it is 220 is where we are now. That's what we're going to talk about.
If I could, if I can just say one more thing, when we started this, we were looking at two scenarios, and I think Mr. Cahill said that. We were looking at the 164 and the 507. I think right now, what's before us is a compromise that's being spoken about, which is the 164 with the additional 56 acres. So that's why we felt that we needed to refocus our presentation on just what is here and now. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, but, but again, we will, if that becomes a possibility, we will go back to what we've done already. I just want to say that this work that was done was very complex, as presented by Patrick today. It's very complex, and we wanted to make sure that we gave the board as much information to make an informed decision. And I think that it's pretty evident, based on what we've shown, that if we don't move the boundary lines, that it would have a very negative impact on the school district and our students.
The only other thing I would address, Lorraine, is your question, I don't think the conclusions would be different. The number would be different.
No, yes. Right. Conclusion would be the same.
No.
They're all the same.
Anything else? Thank you, Patrick. Oh, and Elsie.
Just okay.
But he did the work.
Thanks.
Team effort.
And it takes a while when you have somebody like Patrick Cahill, and you see these specific numbers. I mean, if you had an assistant superintendent of business and finance who would say about the numbers, "I don't know, it's about this," then you'd be in trouble in the school district. But we have somebody who, and his team, that dots every i and crosses every t, and for that, the Board of Education is thankful and appreciative of your presentation tonight, sir.
Thank you.
And I just want to say one thing. I do, I do want to thank Patrick and his team. This has been two years of their lives doing this work, and he doesn't use words like "about." He uses certain, his numbers are very certain and precise. And, and again, this presentation took a lot of work, and so I want to thank him. Thank you.
Thanks. We have a resolution. It is not on board docs because it was tweaked until approximately five minutes of six. So I am going to read a boundary alteration resolution. That is almost three pages. So forgive me, my wife says I like to hear my own voice, but this is even too long for me. But legally, we have to do this, and then the board will motion and second and vote on board resolution. Whereas, the Board of Education of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District has been informed of a recent application pending before the Orange County Legislature for the creation of a new town currently referred to as the Town of Palm Tree, separated apart from the Town of Monroe. Whereas, the Village of Curious Joel has already annexed 164 incorporated acres located within the Town of Monroe and modified its borders accordingly. Whereas, a petition has, but this will be on board docs publicly right after the meeting, so. Where was it? Whereas, a petition has been filed and is pending before the Orange County Legislature to place on the ballot a proposition to the voters of the Town of Monroe to create a new town to be named the Town of Palm Tree, which Town of Palm Tree will ultimately have boundaries coincident with the Village of Curious Joel and an additional unincorporated 56 acres located within the Town of Monroe. Whereas, concomitantly, a change in the boundary of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District has been proposed by Curious Joel Union Free School District to mirror the boundaries of the proposed Town of Palm Tree, including the afferset 164 acres, together with an additional 56 acres of unincorporated property located within the boundaries of the Town of Monroe adjacent to the Village of Curious Joel. Whereas, the Board of Education of Monroe Woodbury Central School District is responsible in all respects for the superintendent's management and control of the school district. Whereas, the Board of Education has the fiduciary duty to the taxpayers of the community to assure the prudent and economical use of public monies in the best interests of the taxpayers of the school district. Whereas, in furtherance of these responsibilities to the taxpayers, residents, staff, and students of the school district, the district administration has undertaken a comprehensive study and analysis of the impact of the school district should the boundaries of the district change. Whereas, the school district retained questar III boces to study the impact of annexation and to forecast the long-term impact on the school district's instructional, operational, and financial future relative to the boundary change. Whereas, the school district, children of lawyers, whereas, the school district established a boundary line alteration committee to discuss the potential boundary alteration, to share data regarding the number of affected children in the annexation area and their best educational interests, the potential fiscal impact of the boundary alteration on both school districts, community relationships, and related matters. Whereas, the school district also engaged the local municipalities in its quest for assessment data, parcel information, tax revenue figures, and associated information. Whereas, the information obtained through these complex conversations and methodical studies has shown that the school district will yield a significant tax loss, a loss of tax revenue, which will impact the school district's operations. Whereas, the school district has engaged and will continue to engage local and state representatives in an effort to secure additional funding to mitigate the impact that the recurring lost tax revenue will have on the school district. Whereas, the school district has received assurances from local and state representatives that they will work legislatively to secure funding through special or amendments to existing legislation, including reorganization aid. Whereas, the Curious Joel Union Free School District has represented to the school district that it will support any proposed legislation in aid to the school district. Whereas, the Curious Joel Union Free School District has represented to the school district that is supportive of the efforts of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District to mitigate its anticipated loss. Whereas, the Curious Joel Union Free School District has represented to the school district that it will assume the costs for out-of-district tuition and transportation for any current resident within the annexed areas described herein who wishes to attend a school in the Monroe Woodbury Central School District. And whereas, based upon these representations and balanced with the findings of the school district's due diligence, research, and analysis, the best interests of the students and the community at large, the district administration recommends the modification of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District's boundaries to the extent herein set forth. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District pursuant to Section 1507 of the New York State Education Law hereby determines that the best interest of the school district is promoted by modification of the school district's boundaries as herein set forth herein, here and after set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Monroe Woodbury School District hereby consents to the proposed boundary alteration between the Monroe Woodbury Central School District and the Curious Joel Union Free School District to mirror the boundaries of the proposed Town of Palm Tree consisting of 220 acres, including both the afferset 164 acres, together with an additional 56 acres of unincorporated property located within the boundaries of the Town of Monroe adjacent to the Village of Curious Joel, as shown on the map attached heretofore as Exhibit A expressly subject to one, the creation of the Town of Palm Tree, including the afferset 220 acres, which shall include both the afferset 164 acres, together with an additional 56 acres of unincorporated property located within the boundaries of the Town of Monroe adjacent to the Village of Curious Joel, by the voters of the Town of Monroe pursuant to, pursuant to the proposition to be submitted to the voters by the Orange County Legislature. And two, provided that the afferset boundary alteration is consented to by the Curious Joel Union Free School District by September 6, 2017. In the event that the foregoing two conditions have been satisfied, the effective date of the school district boundary alteration shall be the July 1 next following the establishment of the Town of Palm Tree. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education directs that the superintendent of schools posthaste submit a certified copy of this resolution to the district superintendent of schools. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Monroe Woodbury, of Monroe Woodbury hereby agrees with the Board of Education of the Curious Joel Union Free School District that upon the written request of any current resident within the annexed areas to permit the attendance of any such residence child in the Monroe Woodbury Central School District in accordance with board policy, with the Curious Joel Union Free School District paying the state-approved non-resident tuition rate to the Monroe Woodbury Central School District and providing transportation of such children to Monroe Woodbury Central School District. And be it further resolved that based upon the representations of the Curious Joel Union Free School District, the Board of Education of Monroe Woodbury Central School District agrees to cooperate with and actively support the efforts of Assemblyman Scoofus to seek special state legislation to provide additional aid for the Monroe Woodbury Central School District to reduce the burden upon the Monroe Woodbury Central School District taxpayers as a result of the significant loss of school property tax revenue due to the boundary alteration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion and second. Is there any discussion? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
He says aye.
He said aye, too. The motion is carried unanimously. We will now have a
Five-minute break.
A five-minute break. And Coming to the meeting, no board business took place during the break. Board, please, we have something to sign at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, so don't run away. And just a slight correction, the resolution that was just read and passed will be on board docs in the morning, not by 10:05 tonight, or however I misstated it. Now, a strategic planning presentation. Matt Burlingham from Hanover Research. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone being here and hearing the short talk that I'm going to give on Hanover Research, some of the conversations Patrick Cahill and I have had to date about how Hanover can support school districts with the development, with the evaluation, and with the overall structuring of a strategic planning process, and how we've done it for a number of districts across the country. And before I get into some of those more specifics around the type of things that Patrick and I have discussed, I'd love to provide some background about Hanover, who we are, what we do, the type of work that we do for districts, not only across the state of New York, but across the United States. So to provide a little bit of background, I always like to sort of explain our origin story, I guess, of sorts. So about 10 years ago, Hanover started supporting offices of institutional research at colleges and universities. And the reason that I like to make this connection to higher ed is the way that we support school districts, educational service agencies, state departments of education, other K-12 organizations, is a little bit similar to the way that a college or university would leverage an office of institutional research. So what we found is school districts, district administrators, district leaders are constantly relying on data, whether that is to develop key performance indicators for a strategic plan, to create, you know, a research-driven framework by which they can follow sort of strategic planning goals. But seldom do the districts that we work with necessarily have the internal full-time research capacity and bandwidth to dedicate a psychometrician to doing, you know, one aspect of the work, to, you know, have a survey team on staff to gather feedback from the community and facilitate focus groups, to explore best practice research, as is found in scholarly research and things like that. And so what Hanover offers is access to complete an uncapped number of research projects over the course of the year. And the way that I got connected with Patrick is we were talking about upcoming strategic planning processes. And this is really one of our specialties when it comes to supporting school districts, answering questions related to how to develop an effective strategic plan, how to make a strategic plan that is indicative and reflective of community goals and, you know, the future desires of the district, but most importantly, one that's quantifiable, one that's measurable, and one by which the district can remain accountable to stakeholders that are involved in the process. So working in higher education, we were getting requests for program evaluations, for alumni surveys, for economic impact studies. You know, as Patrick was presenting his talk on some of the boundary changes, this is another thing that we do very frequently for school districts. And so essentially, what we have is about 250 to 300 analysts with backgrounds from academia, you know, former college professors, former directors of research and assessment at school districts. And we've collected folks with a variety of skill sets and backgrounds and staffed them full-time to tackle the disparate projects that school districts around the country come to us asking, whether that is, how do we maximize efficiencies for our transportation system? How do we quantify students' soft skills using proxy variables to figure out, you know, if our students are becoming more creative year over year? If some of these, you know, quote-unquote, 21st century skills are actually being cultivated and developed in the classroom? There's such a broad sort of swath of research questions that district administrators are constantly confronting, but really, few districts have that full-time capacity and bandwidth to answer it in-house. And this is where Hanover found our niche. Some of the key things that we came across when we launched this practice is that when it comes to strategic planning, there's always a need for an objective third-party perspective. It's helpful to have the outside research expertise to look at things like district expenditures, the return on investment you're getting for expensive purchase programs. Frequently, we're working with school districts that come to Hanover asking for opportunities to maybe cut costs in particular areas that may not be producing the bang for the buck, quote-unquote, that they're looking for. And so we can evaluate certain programs or technology initiatives to figure out ways of cutting costs there while still remaining high levels of student achievement. And, you know, back to a point that I was making earlier, very few districts have a robust internal full-time research office with the types of full-time employees and professionals that can answer a lot of these kind of ad hoc questions that are constantly coming up on a day-to-day basis. And of course, you know, if it came down to hiring a full-time research office or a team of consultants to support with a strategic planning process, that can be very, very costly. Working with Hanover, we offer four core capabilities that we apply to answering these questions related to strategic planning or any other kinds of strategic questions that a school district has. So our team of, you know, 250 to 300 analysts is broken up by skill sets, so we have a survey design, administration, and analysis team. So when we get into talking a little bit more about the specific framework and projects that we could tackle to support, you know, strategic planning goals for the district, you know, one initial step might be a large-scale community survey by which we are gathering equitable feedback from different stakeholder groups, ensuring that not only the loudest voices in the community are heard, but that we're getting feedback from all portions of stakeholders. We can also do the qualitative data coding that can come from gathering feedback in town hall meetings, or really trying to systematize the way that you gather stakeholder feedback to ensure that the strategic plan is reflective of, you know, desires for the future direction of the organization. Data analysis, we have a robust quant team that does everything from demographic analyses to help districts predict enrollment trends, looking at, you know, potentially how the population in your county, region might be shifting in the coming months and years, what differences in wealth might be emerging, what potential new career fields might be emerging, and how you can align maybe career and technical education programming with those sorts of demands. Secondary research, everything from scholarly, you know, meta-analyses where we're looking at scholarly journals, to just providing those best practices in, you know, professional development and technology integration that we've gleaned from research with other school districts. And then peer profiling. This is personally, if I can have a favorite research methodology, it's what we do here. And the way that this typically unfolds is we'll identify maybe a handful of other districts similar to yours that are comparable in terms of demographic, in terms of maybe the place that they're at when it comes to strategic planning, and conduct a series of in-depth interviews with administrators at those other districts to learn how they structured their strategic plan, what sorts of priorities they had, how they measured progress towards things that are elusive like student engagement or career readiness and, you know, difficult to quantify metrics like that. When it comes to working with Hanover, When it comes to working with Hanover, what really differentiates us, because certainly you can get survey work done from, you know, a number of vendors, you can have data analysis performed in a number of different ways, but what Hanover offers is for a fixed annual fee, we complete an unlimited number of research projects. Once we're done with one, we move directly on to the next, and that's what makes us very well-positioned to support something like a strategic planning process, which is kind of by definition, an iterative, ongoing process of investigation, you know, based on findings from maybe an initial stakeholder survey and series of focus groups. We might find that there's a specific priority amongst community members that wasn't initially apparent to the school district administration, and, you know, as a result, you know, this might be something that we would want to explore in more depth through secondary research. Once we're done with that project, we'd move on to the next, so on and so forth. And also, keep in mind when you...I think this is the laser, right, Patrick? There you go.
Yes, it is.
Keep in mind that, within that kind of flexible framework of Hanover, anytime a new project or initiative emerges, or becomes kind of a priority, we can always hit pause on whatever we're working on and pick up that next project. So, for example, if we're in the middle of a program evaluation for maybe a new program, but the need for a messaging survey ahead of a bond or a referendum initiative came up, we could absolutely pick that up and then return to the project that we were working on initially. When it comes specifically to strategic planning and some of the work that Patrick and I have discussed, this is, in general, a framework that we follow when supporting districts that are at various phases in the strategic planning process. So, again, back to the flexibility with which we work, we really do try to emulate an extension of district staff. So, consider your Hanover team kind of an extension of your administration and your department. So, if there was a project that came up, maybe you wanted to look at a SWOT analysis for academic programming, to take a look at what types of programs are currently being offered, and what additional programs parents, students, and other community members might really be interested in seeing offered. This is something that we could pick up right away, and then maybe return back to, you know, the project that we were working on previously. But in general, this is kind of the cadence and the ordering of projects that we would recommend if you were designing a strategic plan from the ground up, starting with an assessment of community needs, identifying some of those priorities from a high level, getting in a little bit deeper, a little bit more granular with the information that we collect, potentially with a SWOT analysis to look at some places that the district's performing really, really well, whether that's academic, extracurriculars, college placement, financial management, and then identifying maybe those areas that could use a little bit more attention, or maybe would require some additional follow-up research. You know, and depending, of course, where you're at with the strategic planning process, we can step in at any sort of one of these phases. So, if we're at a place where you have the general tenants or pillars established for a strategic plan, Hanover can start to put numbers to those things, and create data to, you know, put a goal like increased reliance on professional development to improve student outcomes. That might be an area that we focus on, assign metrics to, so that you know that you're progressing month over month, year over year, towards those goals, and then looking at maybe how professional development is directly impacting student outcomes academically in terms of test scores, or maybe even more qualitatively in terms of behavioral outcomes, you know, soft skill development, things like that. And then, of course, you know, ultimately, we want to know, are we making progress towards these goals that we've identified in conjunction with the community, that we've identified based on best practices for what other school districts are doing? Are we making progress towards those SMART goals that we've identified during the strategic planning process? So, you know, throughout this entire process, we're developing data dashboards, we're providing live progress monitors, so that teachers, administrators can have that live, interactive access to data. They're not, you know, checking in monthly on those quantitative progress metrics. They're able to intervene at an earlier time, I suppose, when needed. And from a very, very high level, you know, these are just sort of three initial areas that would probably be broken down into more specific subcomponents, and that's where, you know, our research would come in and maybe break this initial project down into a comprehensive stakeholder survey, where we're segmenting respondent groups according to, you know, the characteristics that are important. And then maybe based on findings from a particular stakeholder group, we're conducting in-depth interviews and focus groups to dive a little bit deeper into whatever feedback was provided. From there, we might move on to defining metrics and the key performance indicators so that we can start to quantify maybe student progress within a particular subgroup that the district's particularly interested in improving upon. And then from there, we might move on to kind of a quantitative and qualitative summary of district progress to goals, the expenses associated, and predictive analytics regarding, you know, what you might expect to spend in the coming months and years, if you're moving along the track, you know, to progress that we've laid out. In addition to these custom projects that we're doing on an ongoing basis, so like I said, working with Hanover is really access to an adjunct planning unit, an extension of your team, so that, you know, maybe you're launching a one-to-one initiative or something like that, and you want to do vendor reviews for potential devices to find cost-effective options. We could tackle that in maybe four to six weeks. Once we're done with that, maybe something else comes up related to a summer school program offering, and you need, you know, survey data evaluated on that. That's something that we could pick up. But while we're working through all of these projects sequentially, everyone at the district, administrators, teachers, would have access to our online education library. This is a portal that contains about 850 or more best practice reports that we've completed for other school districts. I can pass a couple of these around that we have on our online education library. Again, these are all things that, reports that we've developed for other school systems that have requested these as custom projects, and if we see that, huh, this is something that, you know, the other 350 districts that we work with might be interested in, we'll put these on our online education library. Those are searchable by keyword, key phrase. And what's really nice about this is, while we're working through the strategic planning process, maybe a school principal has questions on alternative disciplinary practices, can very easily search this online database and find all of the best practice reports, the secondary research that we've done on those topics. So that's a nice supplementary resource to, you know, your custom research team that's working through the projects that you've outlined. And then the district also has access to a resource called Data Lab, which is, for those who are familiar with NCES data, it's very cumbersome and kind of difficult to navigate. We have run this all through a platform called Tableau, so that you can very easily benchmark yourself against other districts around the country, identify peers similar to yours in terms of whatever criteria, you know, you're looking at, whether that's EL, student population, or size of district, or budget dollars, or something like that. So this allows you to see what your neighbors and peers are spending, how they're investing on instructional resources, and this might complement very well, you know, this transition with boundaries, to see how other districts have negotiated and kind of navigated costs associated with those. So, we've tried very hard to create a comprehensive sort of service offering that gives you access not only to a custom research team that takes your requests on demand and completes those projects, but all administrators, all teachers also are empowered to access this education library with best practice reports, and also access Data Lab to get more of a quantitative picture of how peers are spending, how they're achieving, as kind of a benchmarking tool. And these are some of the, maybe not ideal for a PowerPoint presentation, because there's quite a bit of text, but these are just a few of the projects that we've completed recently for other school systems. Again, they're all over the map, and that's intentional, because school districts, you know, is better than I do. You're addressing a lot of questions, a lot of strategic challenges, ranging from, you know, operations and management, to supporting students emotionally and behaviorally. And the idea behind Hanover is, we have the resources and the research bandwidth and expertise, and able to address all of these things.
Thank you.
Can I ask? There's some time for questions.
Sure, can I ask?
You have my permission.
Thank you, sir. Have you ever worked with a school district like Monroe-Woodbury?
Um, yes.
And what I mean...
Yeah.
Let me clarify that. So, you just sat and watched us discuss moving our boundary lines with a neighboring school district. And obviously, that's going to have an impact on us, and you heard Mr. Cahill speak about the financial implications that it will have. Have you ever had, have you ever worked with a school district that is going through very similar, possibly a similar situation?
We have. We've worked with a number of school districts that are not only in substantial financial distress, but are...
Okay, because we're not in financial distress.
Okay.
Okay.
But we have worked with a number of districts who are encountering significant periods of change that can be associated...
Okay.
...with financial distress, that can be associated with really kind of tragic in some ways, community issues, whether that is, you know, school violence or something like that, or, like you said, you know, kind of a boundary redistribution or something like that. And it's frequently in instances like this where school districts will bring Hanover on board to provide an objective kind of third-party perspective, and be able to navigate some of the data and best practice research associated with those types of decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
I have a few. So you use...
What a surprise.
Yeah. Predominantly Tableau for your...
For data visualization?
Yeah.
That's one of a couple, yes.
And what, you have a backend to it as well?
So, I am not the person to talk about our specific data viz capabilities. I do know that we recently purchased a Tableau server, and so all of our clients have, you know, complete access to that. We do have a full-stack developer on staff who will code and, you know, put those together. Can actually show you an example of a Tableau dashboard that we have. But in terms of some of the platforms that we use, in terms of software, I'd be happy to follow up with a more comprehensive list.
For us, one of the things that we want to look at, and whenever we get into projects like this, or whenever I've gotten into, the challenge is always forcing people to fit, you know, the square peg into a round. And what you want is something that flows, where they don't have to go somewhere and enter data or report on it. You want it to be part of their natural...
Yep.
You know, they're not creating something new in order to say, oh, how are we doing?
Yep.
It just naturally flows up. So, based on, we have a very diverse set of systems, as most New York State schools do. I don't need an answer today, but that would be my, one of my big concerns, is how do you coordinate...
Yeah.
...all of that data? Because it is a very big challenge, and there's other schools that are doing and attempting to do it, and running into quite a few challenges. And you sort of get into this model of saying, okay, do we, chicken and the egg, do we replace everything and go with something that's newer and easier to do? Or do we take everything and try to interface it, or a combination of the two? And I think, for me, the key is not to put an additional burden on the employees or students to have to enter data unnaturally.
Absolutely. And, you know, I appreciate you bringing that up, because I would say, in some form or fashion, that's the number-one question I get from, whether it's board members or district administrators, is, this looks interesting and great, but how much additional work could this potentially put upon my staff? You know, is this, in order to make this work, what's the time commitment that then I'm having to put in on this?
And what's the cultural change?
Right. And so, I can get you a better answer later, but I would say, a huge part of our mission is to make the lives of you folks as easy as possible. And so, rather than, you know, building an entirely new system that everyone has to use, or reconfiguring things to fit the system that you already have, what we'll typically do is defer to however you all work typically. And we have a number of folks internally who, their entire job is to just merge, aggregate, disaggregate data, clean it so that it's in the best usable format, and is, you know, best transferred between systems. We work with Freeport on Long Island. They had a big issue with that when we started working with them. And what ended up happening was, they just sent pretty much all of the data that they had, and it just took us a while to clean and sort of put it all in one unified format. But that's part of sort of the value that I think that we bring to the table in being able to tackle that sometimes laborious, cumbersome, not necessarily immediately valuable type of work, but in the spirit of setting up, you know, more efficient future processes.
I don't want to go into it. It's something that I'm sure...
Sure.
...our cabinet will drill down on. But that's always my biggest concern with these projects...
Absolutely.
...is how natural is it, and how much work? And is it going to take three years to get to a point, or more or less, to where it's natural? It's not, we don't have to go do something to get it, it feeds into it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out, it seems like we already do this, when we have our comparisons, we already know from other schools, other districts within the county, and we're already pretty much, you know, understanding where we lie. I mean, we get test results, and we have to get them just, we're not getting them any faster than you're going to get them? Or you're going to get them any faster than us? So, what is, I'm not sure what the uptake on this is.
Sure.
I'm sorry. I just...
No, no, absolutely.
I feel like we're already doing this, we have goals, we set them, we have a board member who is a student, who's already reaching out to students, we have community outreach, so I'm not, maybe I'm missing something.
No, no. And quite frankly, a lot of the work that we do is work that administrators and current employees aren't incapable of doing. It's just that we can be a huge time saver in being able to take that off the plate of already kind of overextended or busy administrators. You're absolutely right in saying that, you know, the data that we're receiving isn't necessarily proprietary or different from what you all are getting, but when it comes to something like a program evaluation, you know, if we're using data for that, I mean, that involves, you know, maybe one or two quantitative methodologies that, you know, we can take off the plates of administrators, includes, you know, an objective third-party perspective on that sort of program evaluation, because, you know, there's a lot of programs that we encounter that, in one way or another, are kind of near and dear to the district. And so, being able to look with an objective eye at this program is yielding results A and B, and you're looking for result C, you know, this is, maybe it's time to go in a different direction. So sometimes, it's just being able to have some of this work taken off the plates of folks that could certainly do it, and certainly, you know, have done it in the past, but it's a capacity expansion tool that we can take on.
So I'm trying to understand, I'm thinking, what first came to my mind is like, this is almost like you're gathering information from all of the schools, correct? What they do?
Not always.
How they do it? When they do it?
Yeah.
Okay. And if we have some sort of an issue that we come across, maybe punch in something and say, we have this that we're facing, like Ms. Rodriguez said, you know, we... Do you have any experience with a school that's dealing with what we're currently dealing with? So you punched something in almost like a keyword, and, oh yes, that school is doing that, or did that. What worked for them? Is that like the way, this is almost like this Facebook thing?
Well, if I could jump in, I think that one of the reasons why we have this gentleman speaking here tonight is because we've been talking a lot about strategic planning, we've been doing a lot of the work. So I agree with you, a lot of the things that you see up there, we've already done. So I agree with you, a lot of the things that you see up there, we've already done. What we're looking, I think this gentleman is presenting all of the different things that they could offer us. What we're looking for is someone to help us with putting together our strategic plan and that requires a lot of data and a lot of input. We have all of that data, we just need someone who can take the data and put it together and help us as we continue to finalize and create this strategic plan. So that's really what they would do. Like the things that you're looking up there, I know what you're saying, we already have, we already get our data, we know how we fare with, you know, against other school districts, but it's more of a quantitative data and to allow us to have a different perspective on what we're doing and how we can do it differently.
And I don't want to speak for you, Matt, but I think they also look at it in such a way where if they look at, let's say, financial data, right?
Correct.
And there's some school that's very successful and they invest in certain things and they've measured that through the budget, et cetera. That could be something we're under-invested in-
Okay.
-and that that may be something that we, based on, you know, pure analysis and metrics, we could invest in to get better results. Like that's the kind of thing that I think-
You shouldn't be doing this. Yeah, no, that's-
He should.
I just was.
He was doing that. And one more thing that you offer that we, we all have access to is research, but it's difficult for administrators to constantly be, to sit down and spend five hours researching something when we can very easily call up someone and say, just as Patrick said, "What's the research, what does the research say?" So I think that that's another thing that you offer that we are very capable, we're very bright people, but it's, we don't have the time to do that research. And your organization would.
It's the bandwidth.
Correct.
Yes.
Anything else? Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you fighting the traffic and making it up in perfect time.
Please, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Oh, did he arrive late?
It's helpful.
He got here, he got after, he was here after our presentation.
I don't know when you-
I saw Patrick's presentation.
Yeah, he came in right at the-
At that and then-
I stood up.
And then my speed reading.
Yeah.
That was pretty good.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time.
Reports from the Board of Education committees. Do you have a report on the latest audit?
Sure.
Michael, go ahead.
The committee met, I think it was the end of July, I forget the exact date, but we basically met with the external auditors to discuss the upcoming audit. One of the things that I'd like to mention from our interview with them is we got great feedback on Patrick and the team, on what a great job they're doing and how seamless the audit has been. In fact, I was just speaking to Tanya and all the field work is complete for the most part, I believe, and there are no audit differences for the upcoming audit. And just to know, that is a very unusual thing to have happen where the auditors basically can't find any differences in what you're doing on your books and records. So, job well done. We also met with the internal auditors and agreed on an area of focus for the upcoming year. I forget what it's actually called, Patrick, what we're going to focus on, but it's time-
Attendance?
Attendance, time attendance kind of project.
According.
And so we're going to move forward on that for the internal auditors. And that was about it.
Thank you. We haven't had policy committee over the summer, correct?
No, but we will soon.
But we will soon.
Do we have a date?
All right. Facilities?
We've got a schedule.
All right. Summer, slight summer hiatus.
Yes.
All right. Back from the Aboriginal wilds of Australia, from an exciting internship, Sanjana, our student representative, has at least a few things to say, I think, correct?
About her trip and-
I don't want to spend time talking about my trip, but I just wanted to say that I am very, very grateful to be sitting at this table and for the next year, a lot of students at Monroe Woodbury say that probably their favorite thing, the best thing about it, is all the opportunities that they get access to because they go here. And I just want to say that I'm incredibly grateful to have this one and to be sitting with you guys and to have witnessed what happened today. I think that's something that I should acknowledge. Just, I want to also say that throughout the next year, I want to spend time strengthening the relationship between students and Board of Education. I think it's important that moving forward, I give you guys a more diverse perspective. An issue that always comes up is that once you enter Monroe Woodbury, because it's so big, students often spend time isolated in one group of people. And I think that my first goal is to connect with all those different groups of people and then further connect them to you guys. I also want to increase the confidence of students. You guys are a lot more approachable than they think you are. And I think that increasing that confidence will create a stronger link between both groups. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So she didn't speak about what, but I am. This lovely young lady was in Australia. She was working for the Indian consulate and was, spent many, many hours and days in a library doing research. So we are very proud of you and it's wonderful to have you here.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes, we're, I don't think it's your privilege to be here, it's actually ours that you are here. And we look forward to your reports. Let's chat afterwards too, so that we can, yeah, chat. Personnel.
Matt?
Hi, thank you. I know it's, it can be cumbersome to have back-to-back board meetings, there's a lot that goes into that. Summertime in HR is busy and I'd like to start by just saying thank you to the ladies in the HR office. To get everything ready for a board meeting is a lot and then they have to do a lot of work right after the board meeting. So this back-to-back, these back-to-back meetings have been a lot for them, but they've risen to the occasion, they've been wonderful. You'll see on your board docs, there are a number of hires. We also have highlights, including our mentor/intern program additions. But there's been enough speaking tonight, so I am respectfully requesting your approval of the items listed under personnel.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded, any extensive questions for Matt? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Patrick, back to you.
Yeah, I would just ask for approval of the items under business and financial, which include our standard financial reports, monthly financial reports for June, one donation, declaration of obsolete items from Pine Tree desks and textbooks and high school science textbooks. There are a number of contracts, 16 contracts, mostly for special education-related services, student tutoring, ambulance services, and counseling services for district staff. There's two resolutions, I mentioned this in a previous board meeting, one to accept credit cards for tax payments. We have to have the board approve that. And another resolution, annual resolution, to approve the tax rates and the tax warrant, direct the collector, tax collector to collect taxes. And that's what actually, after we approve that, you would be signing, is the tax warrant. We also have a bid and, let's see, free and reduced school meal prices.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded, any questions for Patrick? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Reports, no, Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education Items, 15.1, 15.2, 15.3, .4, .5, .6 on your agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Reports by Board and Central Office, Michael.
Thank you to all the speakers and presenters tonight. It was great to have the community come out and contribute. And then congratulations to the cabinet and the board members on coming up with a resolution for the boundary altercations, alterations. I, uh-
I think altercation. Altercation. I think that's her.
That's a Freudian slip.
Sorry.
Now we'll make that change before it goes on board docs.
Exactly. And then can't leave, the summer's over and you guys all got to go back to work, so have a great year.
They did it work.
Well, back to the classroom.
I just want to thank all the administrators for doing all the work during the summer, getting everything prepared for the upcoming year, all the new hires, everyone that's been in the other buildings, getting everything ready. Welcome all the teachers back, coming back, getting their classrooms ready. Thank the custodial staff for doing everything during the summer, they probably have a lot of work to get the buildings ready. Welcome our new board member, Bob told to do something soon. I hope everything runs smooth on the first day of school and everybody's happy and everything goes great.
Don?
Looking forward to your skit, start the year off.
I don't know if we can keep doing that.
I think we have to take a year off.
I don't know, it's pretty good.
I'm a little-
You don't like it?
So I would like to comment on Assemblyman Scoopis did an outstanding job in helping the school come to the resolution that we did without his help. And I think that as it progresses over time, the taxpayers are going to see a tremendous reward in the, in the work that he put forward for us. And I think, I'm very excited about that. And also for the cabinet and Elsie who worked ridiculously long hours to get the resolution put into its final, its final stages. I think it shows that we have a very competent, diverse group and I think it encompassed a lot of different things.
Thank you.
To me, that's the most, one of the most important things we've, we've had to sign off on.
Yeah.
And Sanjana?
Thank you.
Savannah?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I'm very pleased that we were able to come to a resolution on the issue with KJ. And I'd also like to welcome all the members of our faculty and administration and Sanja.
Hello, everybody.
And I hope everyone had a good summer. I'm looking forward to the start of a new school year and that's about it.
We go around the table, so you have to say something else or not, Sanjana?
We have to say something.
I already said something.
Just wish everybody-
Well, thank you again for, I look forward to working with all of you.
You can, you can do what Leah usually does. Leah?
Welcome, Sanjana. And I wish everybody a nice rest of the summer and a happy Labor Day.
The short and sweet, she hates it when I ask her.
Welcome, Sanjana. And we're ready, finishing up some final projects in technology and will be ready to welcome our teachers in six days and students in eight days.
Really? You had to say the number?
Yeah.
That's, you made it sound so-
I'd also like to welcome officially, Sanjana, welcome back from your trip.
Thank you.
I'm jealous that in 42 years, I've never taken a trip that came even close to what you just shared. I used to coach a fall-
That is true.
I used to coach a fall sport, so it's nice driving around the district and seeing all the fall sports already in full swing, so good luck to all of our athletic teams and hope everybody had a great summer and looking forward to getting back in the group. So, thanks.
Patrick.
Sanjana, welcome, awesome. I also am happy to report that four of our district buildings got an EPA Energy Star rating, so that was, I got that news in June, so the energy conservation program's paying off, we're going to do a little bit more on that-
Look, he's over there, Ken, Ken is happy.
Soon.
It's Ken running around at 2:00 in the morning, turning lights out.
He really does.
That's right, it is, it is, so good news.
All right, good, Matt?
Sanjana, you're awesome. Welcome, welcome. This will be the first year in many, many years where I won't be opening a building as a principal. And it's a little weird, but I have to tell you, I am incredibly confident in the people who are doing that. So I know it takes a lot of hours and time over the summer. Good luck and just let us, all of us know what we can do to support you, so, thank you.
All right.
Oh, thank you, welcome, Sanjana. I look forward to working with you. I want to thank all the speakers that spoke as well and especially James Scoopis. It's relieving a little bit knowing about this legislative bill. It kind of helped with my decision, because I like to say that it's very uncomfortable to feel like you don't have any choices. And as a taxpayer, a parent, as a trustee, it's uncomfortable to feel boxed in and not have too many choices. So I have some concerns still, but I'm feeling good about this, you know, the redrawing of the line, so. And I wanted to just say again, my deepest condolences to Mr. Scoopis because I didn't get an opportunity to do that and his mother was a very dear friend of mine and she is truly missed. And every time that I, you know, we come around this time of year, I'm like, I cannot believe another year has gone by. I cannot believe we're already starting school again. I mean, time is just flying, but I'm really, really proud about what we've done with this district. And listening to these people get up and speak have me really thinking about my kids when they were little and that they, you know, went through the district. And to be feeling like I may fear something, even though my children, you know, I have a daughter who's going to, you know, go through high school and God willing, in four, five years, because she's going to be here for that long, I still think I'm about all the students here and it would be just heartbreaking if they didn't have the same opportunity that my children have. And I'm going to say I'm looking forward to the retreat, or I'm not sure if I'm looking forward to retreat. Don't we have a retreat coming up?
Yeah, I'm going to mention it.
Oh, thank you very much. I thought Eric was going, so I'm thinking I'm up on stuff.
Eric is kind of quiet, I don't know what's going on, I think he's exhausted.
I think I loved everything, like, I thank you. I swung and missed. I'm leaving it for everybody else.
His knuckles have been wrapped enough.
I know.
I fixed it.
Have a happy rest of the summer and I'll leave it there.
Stacy?
I want to welcome our new board member. I'm looking forward to working with you, I think it'll be great and you'll do great things. I want to thank all the presentations tonight and I especially, as my first year has officially gotten under my belt, I want to thank Mrs. Rodriguez and the entire cabinet because, and the other members of the Board of Education, because it's been a lot of questions and a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls and it really is a phenomenal group of people to work with. And I second a lot of what Lorraine said, that one of the reasons that I moved to Monroe Woodbury, the biggest reason, was I have four children currently and it was for the school system. And my youngest will be starting Pine Tree this year at fifth grade and my oldest will be a junior. And I not only want to see all of them get through Monroe Woodbury, but I am hoping that I will come back and have grandchildren here as well. So I think I speak on behalf of a lot of us that have a vested interest in the school district and that we really want to see great things happen and I think working with everybody will be able to accomplish that.
Dan?
Want to welcome Sanjana, even though you didn't bring us anything. Boomerang. Small, wild would have been nice.
I'm serious, I don't even know who's wrong.
I'm going to move to Ed Center.
I want to thank all the administrators, all the staff, buildings and grounds. Most people really don't realize what goes into getting the district ready from one year to the next. They think, end of June comes, we just shut our doors and everybody takes off for a couple months. But there is a tremendous amount of work that goes into planning to make sure that the opening of school, from the buses to scheduling to, you know, just, you know, the classrooms, everything is set. And it's a lot of work and it is appreciated. I also want to thank those people who worked on the Boundary Altercation Committee, both for the school, the public who was involved in it, and that it's an important part of our district to make sure that for the long term, our district continues to thrive and be a, you know, the highlight of Orange County, that it's a district people want to be in. Thank you.
Elsie?
Well, welcome, Sanjana. And I think everyone sitting here should realize that you just witnessed a part of history, right? We went back to 1990 when the Curious Joe Al's Central Schools District was first established and the people sitting at this table, who were different people, felt that that was the best thing for the school district. And our question today was whether do we continue that or do we not? And I think that you saw a resounding yes by this Board of Education, by this cabinet, and this is a commitment because everyone who was here today, which included Assemblyman Scoopis, parent members, people of a small group, and us as well and board members, all had the same thought, which is we want to save our school district. And I think today's, today's decision by the Board of Education did that. We are very, very proud of our school district and as I said, three and a half years ago, almost four years ago, when this all started, that we would make the best decision for our children and for our community. our children and for our community. And I truly believe that today we did that. We made the best decision for our kids and our community. So I thank everyone who was involved in this. I especially want to thank my cabinet, because it has been a long two weeks, and I have really tormented them. But we are a good team. I am, I am really proud of you guys, and I don't often say that, so that is true, but, but I am really proud of you. I could not, we could not have done this without each and every one of you, without everything that you've done, and I am very thankful to you. And to our administrative team, I am so proud of what you're about to do, because I already know what you're going to do. You're going to do great work, and I am confident, as Matt said, that you are going to, we're going to have a phenomenal year. And so, with that, I will say that our administrative team will be on a retreat for the next two days. So I look forward to that, and, and again, I look forward to the opening of schools and seeing our teachers and seeing our children, because that's the most important thing. Thank you.
I get out, to save time, it was a momentous, took a lot of work, and a lot of thought, and a lot of moving parts to get done this resolution. The facts and figures that Patrick presented, but also all of the psychological stuff that goes into our unique situation in this, in this region, and how we can best move forward, and for us to focus and not get distracted by a lot of the stuff that goes on, and focus on what is best for this school district going forward. And a lot of time and effort went into it, and I, and I appreciate it. September 9th, we have a board retreat. Three people have sent back their reviews of the board for the self-evaluation of the board. Please, I will keep reminding you, please get that here. Elsie and I are going to talk about various goals for the, to discuss at the retreat. September 9th, BOCs. And a quick announcement that I forgot, that Orange County District Attorney David Hoovler will sponsor two county-wide forums on the heroin epidemic gripping this area and the rest of the country. Opioid Crisis, a public forum on education, treatment, and law enforcement will center on Hoovler's Connect 2 Disconnect Opiate Awareness Campaign. 6:30 October 3rd, Tuesday, Monroe Woodbury High School, and Thursday, October 19th, Minisink Valley High School. Take about an hour and a half, bring together law enforcement, county, government, drug abuse educators, treatment providers. It's a very real, somebody said, asked me, a friend said, do you have, do you have any drug problems in your school district? And I thought, what school district does not have drug problems? If there's even one person, one student, we have a drug problem. So, we have to keep addressing this. It's very important for, to partner with our community on this. So anyway, well, that's it. Do I?
Wait, can you just add that also at the ends of October, there's also a Save a Life,